Good evening, welcome to the Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals. It is the 25th of January 2018, 7:05 PM. These meetings are being recorded by the Zoning Board of Appeals and also by HCAM. First item on our agenda is Riverstone LLC, application for a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Laws Section 40B to construct a 36-unit condominium development, including nine affordable units on approximately 6.7 acres of land located off Ward Street, MAP 124, lots 70 to 75 and 26, in Residence District B. The revised site layout plan dated December 20th, 2017 depicts 32 units. Who do we have here this evening for the applicant?
We are here.
If you could please... I'd like to begin by asking the zoning administrator, Emily Whitworth, to review submissions received by the board since our last meeting.
Before we do that, one quick thing. Been asked by HCAM, you don't need to speak directly into the microphone, as long as it's close, we're good. So, we had an issue with that, I guess, on the last hearing. So, thanks.
Thanks.
So, I'm just going to organize them by who we received the materials from. The first list are materials submitted on behalf of the applicant.
Emily, you go first. Can people hear Emily speaking?
No, I didn't think so.
Sorry, I will speak up. The first item we received since the last hearing was held on January 11th was correspondence from Attorney Baker dated January 19th, 2018 regarding certain drainage improvements. We then received a revised plan set prepared by McKenzie Engineering Group with the latest revision date of January 19th, 2018, consisting of 16 sheets. Also, response to engineering peer review comments prepared by Susan Spratt, the project manager from McKenzie Engineering, dated January 23rd, 2018. Proposed soil absorption system sizing prepared also by MEG or McKenzie Engineering Group, dated January 23rd, 2018. A new waiver and exemptions list received, it's not dated, but received January 24th, 2018, consisting of six pages. As well as this evening, we received a response to traffic peer review comments prepared by Ronald Mueller of Ron Mueller and Associates dated January 25th, 2018. Materials we received either from representatives of the board, peer review engineers, or town departments include a supplemental civil peer review prepared by Patrick Brennan of Amory Engineers dated January 18th. Correspondence from Susan Sarny, Executive Health Director, dated January 22nd, 2018. Correspondence from the Hingham Board of Health regarding nitrogen-sensitive areas within the Town of Hingham, State Title V Standard and Hingham Supplemental Standard, received January 24th, 2018. Correspondence from Mary Savage Dunham, Director of Community Planning, dated January 24th, 2018. Correspondence from Glenn Olson, Police Chief, dated today, January 25th. As well as an exhibit prepared by Patrick Brennan depicting wetland lines from public records between 2002 and the current plan, received today, January 25th, 2018. From members of the public or on behalf of Butters to the Project, we received correspondence from Attorney Jeff DeLeese dated January 25th, including a 1964 taking and reference plans for Autumn Circle. Comments from Maria Burke of Seven Autumn Circle dated January 12th. Correspondence from Graham Madison, Twelve Autumn Circle dated January 19th. Comments from Lisa and Brad Taylor from Sixteen Autumn Circle dated January 22nd, including photographs and an application related to their property for variance from Board of Health regulations. And correspondence from Yvette Yusaf, 48 Ward Street, dated January 24th. That's what we have since January 11th.
I know that members of the public have been submitting comments. They will all be included in the public record and reviewed by this board. And to the extent that additional comments are developed by members of the public as we proceed, please make sure that you send them in and get them to Emily Whitworth at the Zoning Board, and we will make sure they are included. So, thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask the applicant just to review with us the new information that they've made available. Thank you.
Chairman, for the record, Brad McKenzie, McKenzie Engineering Group. As was read into the record, we submitted a letter dated January 23rd, 2018, which was a response to Patrick Brennan of Amory's letter dated January 9th, 2018, which was basically a preliminary review for the project. And in response to that review, we submitted a new set of plans and some supplemental information that was mentioned by Emily.
By the way, those new plans are also dated January 23rd?
They're dated, revision dated January 19th.
But submitted on the 23rd?
Correct. The first item was a waiver, revised list of waivers and exemptions. And what we did is we updated the original list of waivers and exemptions that was submitted to the Zoning Board originally, I think it was in 2016. To take into consideration, some of the revised setbacks, some of the units have been relocated. And also, the original list had a column that depicted whether or not the waiver was required or not. And for some reason, we had some waivers in the original list that were not required. We removed them from the list. In addition, as requested, we clarified which specific sections of some of the other local regulations that we were asking for exemptions from, specifically the Board of Health regulations, the local wetland bylaw and regulations. And there's quite an extensive summary of the relief that we're asking for under those regulations within the new submission.
Let me stop you there. Just, Tom, looking at the list of waivers, are you saying that you've removed some that were there before?
That were not required. Oh, so if you look at the original list...
Right.
There's a column that said waivers, waiver requested.
Right.
We had some items in that column said, "No." We removed those items.
I'm asking because at least the version I'm looking at that was recently received asked to be exempt from all provisions of the Hingham zoning bylaw and all provisions of every other local regulation. So, I didn't see where something was removed. I'm looking at the very top.
Without limitation.
The original, this is the copy of the original list.
Yeah, but I'm looking at the one that was just submitted.
Yes.
And if, how does that begin? Do you have the, in front of you?
I do.
And the very first line says pursuant to MGL 40B?
Correct.
Could you just finish reading that?
Adopted pursuant thereto, the project should be exempt from all provisions of the Hingham zoning bylaws, including without limitation, the following.
So, this says, at least this is a request for exemption from all zoning bylaws. Are you saying that that's not correct? Some have been removed?
Would you like to comment on that?
I think in order to solve that issue, and I understand the technical thing that you're bringing up, I think that the, I think we need to amend it by saying all provisions of it that would allow the building of the project as permitted, including without limitation. So, the purpose of that one is to say, anything that would interfere with the project as permitted, we are asking for a waiver of that, or as presented.
Right, but is the list that's here a list of all of the regulations you're looking to have waived, or are there more that may be required if we look closely at your plans?
Our hope is that we have covered all of them, all right? However, as it progresses, as changes might be made, as modifications addressing it, one may come into play that may not be there, hence the reason for the savings clause.
Okay, but without any further modifications, the plans as they're submitted today, are these all the regulations, or are there others that you're also seeking waivers?
We believe this is a complete list.
Okay. Okay, please continue.
Back to the items that were recently submitted. A landscaping plan was submitted, we'll call it a preliminary landscaping. It's not prepared by a registered landscape architect, but the plan up on the board here shows some general language relative to street trees, perimeter fencing around most of the project. There are... There are some retaining walls proposed as well. We're proposing fencing at the top of those walls. There's some coniferous trees here, proposed to provide a permanent buffer between these units and the adjacent property. I won't get into it. It's not a very detailed landscaping plan, but basically, it provides, the intent of the plan was to demonstrate that the applicant intends on providing permanent buffers in the form of fencing and landscaping around the perimeter of the developed portion of the property. The, as was read into the record, some sizing calculations for the septic system have been included, which confirm that the system will be designed at this point for 9,900 gallons a day. There are six two-bedroom units proposed and 26 three-bedroom units proposed. And the table one that was included in the January 23rd submission provides sizing calculations for the system that is shown on the current set of plans to confirm that adequate surface area is available to accommodate that system. In addition, the submission that was just made addresses some of the comments in the Vanas January 4th letter. Some of the other items in that letter have been addressed by Ron Mueller and Associates, the traffic engineer that was just submitted tonight. But to be more specific, we did, our submission provided some truck turning analysis plans, the last two plans in the sheet, in the plan set. We're having difficulty with the resolution, so I'm just going to leave it in this part. There's a truck turning analysis for the Hingham loudest fire truck, largest fire truck, as well as delivery vehicles. And they're shown in the last two sheets. So, the analysis does show that the largest vehicle, there's a template of a Hingham tower truck, that the largest fire truck field can manipulate and adequately turn around within the site. So, that addresses one of Mr. Durk's comments. Another question or recommendation in Mr. Durk's letter, and it was touched on by Pat Brennan of Amory as well, was that they requested that we provide for two-foot grass strip between the curb and the sidewalk that's proposed. We've provided that grass strip throughout the entire project. We've provided marked stop lines and crosswalks and ADA compliant wheelchair ramps at the intersection of Ward Street. We've extended the sidewalk down from the interior of the project to Ward Street as requested. And another comment that Mr. Durk had was, he was concerned that we didn't have adequate distance between the garages and the back edge of the sidewalk or travelway. And we've adjusted the units to provide for the requested 21 feet from the sidewalk to the garage and 23 feet from the garage to the edge of the travelway. Some of the other items in the January 4th Vanas letter, we will address in our next submission. We did receive a January 18th letter from Amory Engineers. We're in the process of responding to the balance of those review comments and anticipate a resubmission of the preliminary drainage calculations in plan set probably by the end of next week. That's our goal at this point. Any questions?
Well, one of the things we need to work on is getting timely submissions. Obviously, it's something that's presented at 6 o'clock tonight. We will not have had a chance to review. Our peer review experts will not have had a chance to review. You spent considerable time talking about materials that were submitted January 23rd. Today is the 25th. So, again, there's going to be a lag in review and the ability to respond. We've asked before that we receive submissions at least a week in advance so that we can review them and prepare at least some sort of response in a timely manner. What we're getting is just not meeting that schedule. And so, it's causing further delay because we need the opportunity to review what's been submitted and not just look at it five minutes before hearing. And I understand that you're working, but that schedule is having an adverse impact on our ability, on this board's ability to respond. So, I'd ask, you've mentioned a couple of things that are going to be coming hopefully by the end of next week. That that be a firm deadline so that we can move forward. Is that likely to happen?
Yes, next Fri-, by next Friday.
Pat Brennan here? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's on.
Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers, being the board's civil consultant on this project. I'm going to go over some of the comments from my January 18th letter, the major ones, what I would consider the major ones. Can we get, just got to get that, the whole...
Yep. Brett, how's the...
The reason why we're using this is we can't read it.
Okay. So... So, there's, I'll just go to the technical comments that I had in this letter. The comments up above were from my January 9th letter. So, one of the technical comments, there's proposed retaining walls on the project as Mr. McKenzie had alluded to. There's one in this location. That one's only one to two feet high. It's not a big deal, but it's right against the edge of the road. I think there should be a guardrail or something on that retaining wall so that cars coming around this corner are protected from going over that wall. There's other walls, three other walls on the project. This one right here, which forms a 90-degree angle adjacent to the property at 64 Ward Street, that one is up to 15 feet tall in this location. It's only about five feet off the property line. I think they're going to have a tough time trying to construct that without encroaching onto that Butters property, having it only five feet off the property line. The high side of the wall is the 64 Ward Street property, so the face of the wall will be visible from the project site. So, that's a 15-foot wall that they'll be looking at in there. They are showing the six-foot vinyl fence along the top of that, so that protects people from, well, basically falling off the wall and getting near it. There's another one down here right adjacent to Ward Street. I believe that one is up to about eight feet high. And again, they need some type of a fall protection on the top of that one. There isn't on the current plan, the plans that they just submitted yesterday, or today. And then there's another one, it's not shown on here, but along the detention basin, that's about six to seven feet high. Any wall over four feet high requires a building permit, so I just want to put that up front. And it requires design by a structural engineer. The sidewalks are four feet wide throughout the development. Four feet wide is the minimum required by the American With Disabilities Act. Five feet wide is the minimum required by many other agencies. The reason why five feet wide is usually a minimum and six feet is preferred is that people really can't walk shoulder to shoulder on a four-foot wide walk. And people walking in opposite directions can't pass one another without stepping out of the walk. So, I just bring that up for the board's attention. They have included roadway profiles in the plan set, but they just show the roadway centerline profiles. They don't show any of the drainage or sewer infrastructure. We really need to see that, to see that the utilities can be installed without conflict, especially at intersections, where you're going to have pipes coming in different directions. They adjusted the waiver requests on the new submission. I'd note that the rear yard, there's a, the last unit up here, the rear yard setback to the back, they show it's either as being a deck or a patio off the back of the unit. That's 5.6 feet off the rear property line there. The front yard from the rear deck of actually, I think it's one of these units, is 5.7 feet off the front setback, so that's off the Ward Street layout. Going into the drainage, I'd like some drainage pipe sizing calculations along with rim and invert elevations. I mentioned this the last time, they've provided some test pit data, but the test pit data shows water table elevation all over the place, really not consistent throughout the site. It does show sandy soils consistently throughout the site, but not water table elevations. I mentioned before, they have, I think there's 18 subsurface infiltration systems for the roof runoff, and they don't have test pits at each one of those. We really don't know what the water table is at those locations, and we're going to need to know that, to know if the systems are going to work. Some of those, based on the proposed grading and the HydroCAD model, some of those systems don't have sufficient cover. One of the systems is located in the emergency turnaround here for the fire department, located under that, so that has to be designed for the fire department, the weight of the fire A number of my other comments are related to the details of the drainage calculations, the model and so forth, so I won't go through those. The detention basin section that they show on the detail sheet shows a sediment forbay, however, there's no sediment forbay shown, at least graphically, it's not shown on the plan sheet. They, as Mr. McKenzie pointed out, they did just submit the sizing calculations for the septic leaching field. But based on the size of the leaching field, it is under a portion of this road and the corner of it's under the portion of this road. There's also tanks located partially under this road in this location. And we really need information to show that those components will be properly designed and suitable for traffic loading, especially with the fire apparatus, as we heard from the fire lieutenant last time. We're going to need the full septic system design information to verify compliance with Title V and where it does not comply with the Hingham Board of Health supplementary rules and regulations. And they do show erosion controls detailed on one of their detail sheets, but the erosion controls aren't shown in plan anywhere, so they don't tell us where they're going. And I think they should just be shown on one of these sheets so that we know where those erosion controls will be located. Yesterday, I did come into the office and I reviewed the planning board files for the Viking Lane subdivision. And what I found was the 2002 Viking Lane plan that was approved by the planning board and by Conservation at the time, the wetland line was slightly different from the current wetland line. And I, it's up there somewhere.
Yeah, if you can blow that up, that'd be...
It's difficult to see, but this is the location where I'm talking about. The, in red, if you can tell that it's red, this is the old wetland line here. There's a little knob that came up like this along the Butters fence line, which put the buffer zone out like this, which would include a portion of that, the extension into Autumn Circle. This is the buffer line from the existing, or the current application shown on the current plans. So, the current wetland line shown in green with the buffer zone shown in green, the 2002 that was approved by Conservation, shown in red with the buffer line shown in red. I think they should probably go to Conservation and get an NRAD to certify the current wetland line so that we know that it's not, the buffer zone isn't extending out into that Autumn Circle property. That's it for now.
Any questions, Chair? At the last meeting, I had asked the town's real estate council, Susan Murphy, to talk about, to look into the Autumn Circle right-of-way issue.
Great.
Do you have something to report to us this evening?
Yeah, so I have both the recorded taking from the town meeting when it was accepted as a public way, which was in 1964, and also the plan...
Excuse me, one second, Susan. Can people hear, Susan?
No. It's trying not to be on top of them. Okay, sorry about that. I'll quickly repeat. I have the taking layout by the Board of Selectmen after the town meeting in 1964, which is a recorded document. It also referenced a recorded plan, which I have. I have fully reviewed the plan.
Yep.
And the layout of Autumn Circle does not include any interest, or does not include in the right-of-way at all that 40-foot strip between the two lots. It does include a drainage easement benefiting the town. Based on the 1964 plans, there is a drainage pipe running vertically across that area. I presume it's, it was constructed and that it is still there. But there is no portion of any private lot, with the exception of some slope easements, that is included in the town's accepted layout.
Okay. Any questions, Susan? I'm good, thanks. Emily, can you review for us what the major open issues are at this point so we can begin getting closure on these things?
Well, while we did receive a response to traffic review, to traffic review comments received earlier last month, we don't yet know if that addresses all the traffic issues...
I'm sorry, you're talking about something that was received this evening?
Just this evening, right. So, traffic remains one of the most significant topics that we haven't yet covered in great detail. Also, as Pat Brennan just noted, we don't yet have sufficient information about the wastewater disposal system that's proposed for the site. And then there are a number of design details and technical comments that, as of yet, have not been addressed, and at some point, the board will likely need to weigh in on, you know, and provide some direction. But I think traffic and wastewater remain the two most significant.
Do our consultants in the process of reviewing that?
Our peer, our peer review consultant just received it maybe 6 o'clock this evening. So, when we talk about scheduling... So when we talk about schedule, we'll just have to take his schedule into account, when he might be able to complete a review and present his findings to the board.
Yeah, I agree. I think traffic is going to be significant, and we will have to have an opportunity to have their response reviewed.
I guess the one other thing that I don't believe is yet on the record, but please correct me if I'm wrong, is whether Aquarium Water Company has confirmed that they'll be able to serve the property, they have, that they have capacity. Do you know the status of that? Do you have a will-serve letter yet from the water company?
We do not. But there's, there's a water main that currently exists that was installed as part of the subdivision plan. But we understand the demand is greater than what is proposed.
Yep.
So are you planning on moving forward with Aquarium?
Yes.
I think in the past, we've had them get a letter from Aquarium, they'd have to put a condition, whatever it was, they've had that, so...
Yep. So if you haven't already initiated the conversation, you should do so.
Have you had a chance to review the list of waivers and exemptions? I mean, I'd like to talk on some of those things. Yeah, I think we should talk about the waivers. And in many ways, the issue is going to go to what Emily just talked about, getting some more details. Because what we will need, when we look at the waivers, is a statement from the applicant as to why each of these waivers is necessary. And simply a request, for example, I'm looking at the second one, which is site plan review. You're looking for a waiver from site, why is that waiver required? I'm assuming what you really mean is a waiver that the planning board do site plan, but not a waiver that this board does site plan review. So, or if you're looking for an absolute waiver of the site plan review, what's the reason that that waiver is required? And that's going to be the same question for every item on here. So it would be helpful...
Are we going through every item tonight?
Well, it may be more efficient if you add in a column that says, you know, for example, you need the setback requirement because Unit 43, which is located in this quadrant of the map, intrudes, and so therefore, we need the waiver to accommodate that unit. There's not going to be a blanket waiver of setback requirements unless it's associated with a specific item on your plan that requires that waiver.
That can be done for some of these items, but some, it can't be.
Well, then we'll need to know which ones can't be, because we, this board will need to make a determination, based on representations from the applicant, whether or not each of these waivers is needed in order for the project to proceed. So if there's an item here that is not associated with a specific point on the site plan, or some other aspect of your project, we'll need to have that addressed.
May I?
Please.
With regard to some of them, for example, you gave the example of the site plan.
Right.
The zoning board requires the site plan review by the planning board. The first issue is...
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'm sorry. I thought you said that one of the waivers was the requirement of a site plan from the planning board.
So what I, what I said is that your waiver request says site plan review.
Okay.
And I said, I'm assuming that what you were asking for is a waiver of the planning board doing the site plan review, not of this board doing a site plan review. So that's why we need to have the clarification. And if you're looking for a waiver for this board to do a site plan review, we need to know why. Why that is a required waiver in order for this project to proceed.
The section that is referenced, mentions planning board's site plan review. All of these sections, what you see, the first table that you see is from the zoning by law.
Right. So, but under 40B, this board steps into the shoes of various other boards to, in fact, conduct those reviews. So, we, this board plans on doing, we step in by operation of law. We act as the planning board in doing a site plan review. So are you asking us not to do a site plan review? Or are you simply saying, we don't want the planning board to do it, but it's, we understand that the zoning board's going to do it?
We, that is correct. That is correct. Section I-1, under the multi-unit development section, specifically states that the planning board will do, will be the site plan review authority, and that's what we're asking. The planning board will not be involved in this process. That's just what we're confirming.
Additionally, in order to fashion the response that you're trying to look for, for example, waivers are only required from issues as of right. You are acting as the planning board. When we're dealing with special permits and with site plans, normally they fall into special permits for which a waiver is not required by the regs.
Exactly.
So, in fashioning the response, we put it in there to be inclusive, to make sure that there was no doubt. But you want us to have a further explanation, as we have just talked about now?
Yes, because we will need, for each waiver request, we need it tied to a specific aspect of the application.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a clarification, that it is not true that site plan review is only required in connection with a site plan review.
Say that one more time.
I'm sorry. It is not true that site plan review is only required for special permits. Site plan review is also required in connection with as-of-right projects. And so therefore, it is not appropriate that it be waived. And as far as whether the, they, a waiver so that the planning board doesn't do it is also not required, because as a matter of state law and the regulations, the planning board's not involved under 40B. So, you know, obviously, they can revise this as they wish, but I don't see a reason, at this point, why site plan review by the zoning board is, would not be appropriate.
Correct. So with respect to every regulation that is otherwise reviewed by other boards, there is not a waiver, because it would otherwise be reviewed by another board. That is not a basis for a waiver, because state law simply says we are acting in that capacity. And just to, let me just finish, just to make it clear, from the various comments, the planning board is providing input, and we expect them to be providing input. The only restriction in 40B is, that is not a board that the applicant needs to go to in order to get the permit. But we, we have been soliciting comments from planning board, as well as the other boards, to make sure we get all the appropriate input that's needed.
In this particular case, for this section I-1, it talks about the process of site plan review. The who is the permitting authority, the special permits required, submission, which we all know is different than the process involved with this board reviewing a 40B project. We're not saying we're not subject to site plan review by the zoning board.
Okay.
We're saying, so it's the process, really. So we tried to be, we tried to be inclusive, and start at the beginning of the book, and go right through every section we didn't think applied to the process or this plan.
Okay. So, so we can make it, make sure that we're all on the same page, if, again, we're stuck with site plan review, because I selected it, but if there are five documents that need to be produced to site plan review, there is not, I am understanding, you are not requesting a waiver to produce those five documents. You are only saying you're going to produce them to the zoning board instead of to the planning board. Or if you are requesting a waiver of those five documents, you need to specify that, and for each one, why it is that you think it's not appropriate to provide it to this board. So that's the level of specificity that we need in order to evaluate the waiver request. Right. So, I mean, you picked a good one, because we got a letter from the planning board director of community planning that's, that's saying that the applicant should submit all the specified information in section I-I point four for review, which would be for us. Right. Or, so you're going to want a waiver from that? Well, as far as I can tell, they're, they're looking for a waiver... Saying I-I, so... From the entity that's doing it, but I've got no specific request for a waiver of any of the actual... I-1... Of what needs to be done as part of the site plan review, or any, any other item, unless you want to identify it and say, we can't do it because, whatever your reason is.
Okay, so just to be clear, in I-1-I, there are probably 30 paragraphs. You want me to go through every paragraph and state whether or not I'm looking for relief from that paragraph?
I only want you to go through the paragraphs that you're looking for relief from. So if there's, if there's 40, and you only really want relief from two...
And state why for each paragraph.
Then just go over the two. So regarding wetlands and border health, it's, you know, you don't, you want a waiver from going to Conservation and Border Health, which I understand, I've done a lot of these 40B projects in this town. But you still should go to Conservation and Border Health and present your information, and comply with the state of Massachusetts wetlands protection laws. I mean, before this board makes a decision on this development, I can't see that being done, making a decision on this until that's done, so... So to the extent that there are other local boards that are implementing state regulations as opposed to local regulations, you would still need to go to those boards. So, state regulations on, for wetlands, you would need to go to the Conservation Commission on the state issue, obviously not on the local issue.
I'd have to agree on the wetlands thing. I think the wetlands thing is maybe critical for the applicant here. A couple of these units, 10, 11, 12, 13, they're very close to that wetland line. Knowing, well, having appeared before the Conservation Commission, I know, Joe, you, you were on it for, for a time. These buildings are pretty close to that wetland line, and I think they're going to have some concerns over that. I'd hate to see this application tripped up because they won't approve these buildings, because they're too close. I mean, I'm with, I think I'm with Mario, I'd like to get some comfort as to what the Conservation Commission is thinking. And again, this is under the state act and the state regulations. As you know, anything within 100 feet of the wetland is within their jurisdiction, so...
What are your plans with respect to getting a delineation of wetlands? Do you have plans to go in and either get a confirmation or revision to the prior wetlands
At some point, at some point, yes.
So at this point, we only have the wetlands line that's been approved and delineated. Are you asking us to deviate from that line when we review your, your application?
Yes.
And is...
Well, that line's no longer valid, first of all. The one that was approved in 2002 is...
I thought it was in 2005?
2005. Is no longer valid. So our, our consultant feels quite, feels that it's a conservative line, it feels quite confident in his delineation. So...
Is there a reason?
We'll have to talk as a team as to, as to the timing of, of an application, a formal application with the commission.
Susan, what's our ability to rely on a line that has not been delineated? Like, you know, in a proof, a line that's...
Approval line, yeah.
The board's going to have to make decisions whether or not to waive any or all of the local wetlands regulations, and that has to do with setbacks. And I, I guess, without a definitive line as to where the, where the wetlands are, how are you supposed to determine if a waiver of setbacks from the wetlands or buffer zones is appropriate? I mean, to me, that's like saying, well, you know, we had someone go out there and we drew a line, and we think this is the property line, but we don't have any meets and bounds or survey stakes, but we're pretty confident that that's the boundary of our property. It's, it's the same thing. You know, I'm happy to look at, at the law on this, but for someone to come in and draw a line and say it's the wetlands, and they don't have a certified wetlands plan, does not seem to me that it would meet even 40B standards.
Okay. Chairman, if I may, I know that there's been a lot of comments about a number of things, and I know you're moving along. I just want to get your guidance on some responses to those, those items. So tell me when I can do that.
If you've got a checklist that you want to go through now, now, that would, I will certainly...
Fair enough. I don't know if I have a checklist. I've got many, many notes, but let me hit some highlights. One of the first questions was the, the response from our traffic engineer with regard to his upgraded report and study on the other thing. We received that this afternoon from the, from them. I believe that an email was sent to you. I don't know if you mentioned it in the other thing. I do have originals. Would you like me to deliver them to you? Okay.
Do we have electronic versions as well?
We have a digital version.
Okay, great. That'll get stamped and entered. Thank you.
What are the comments?
I'm going to have you wait till you sit down, so that they pick you up.
Fair comment. One of the comments earlier was the, the report by Attorney Murphy about the taking, all right? And there was also a letter that I had for about an hour before this, submitted from, from Orenberger's office. The, I did want to make a quick comment about that particular issue.
Let me just stop you. So you're referring to council for some of the abutters?
Yes. I'm not going to address that until you want me to, but at least on the question Ms. Murphy had brought up. A question was asked at the last hearing about whether or not we had, and I said I had the title report outstanding, looking at exactly each one, but we felt confident that between easements, okay, and maybe an intervening taking, that we had certainly rights to that traffic circle. I did not represent that that way had been taken. And as a matter of fact, it hasn't been. I have no doubt about that, because I looked at it.
Okay.
And, the good part about it, of course, depending upon how you look at it, it wasn't taken, so it still exists. And a matter of fact, that particular way was recited, not only in the subdivision plan, that was certainly recorded, it also impacted the deeds of the property owners that are subject to that. It additionally was shown on the plan, and if you look at, I'm glad to see that the, that map was done, but if you look at that map that was done in the taking, the, the town took the rights on the easement for, for drainage. Very clear they took that. And who did they take it from? The right-of-way from us. So it recites the fact that Viking Lane was a party to that, that, that thing. And as a matter of fact, did not receive compensation, like anybody else. If you look at the plan, it also recites where that is, and recites the 40-foot right-of-way to our property. So again, reconfirms that what was done in the subdivision plan, what was done indeed, and what was done by the town. So I, I, I think what we get through this, we'll find that we have rights to do exactly what we intend to do. But I just want to make it clear that I never represented that the, that way was, that 40-foot right-of-way was taken. In fact, it wasn't.
Any other items on your checklist?
Um, let me see. No, I think the other ones are more engineering-based, which will be answered in due course.
Susan, I do want to talk more generally about what 40B requires, and what we're going to be, what we should be asking for from the applicant, but I'm wondering if this is a good time to sort of go into the, back to the Autumn Circle question. And with that, I was going to invite, if the council for, I'm sorry, there, to, to comment, are you okay with that, Susan?
Yes, I have a clarif, what I believe is a clarification to Mr. Baker's comments, but I can wait until the end, whenever you wish, you respond.
Sure. Good. You can just introduce yourself for the record.
Just to refresh the board's recollection, my name is Attorney Jeff Delisi. I'm with the law firm, Orenberger, Delisi &amp; Harris. I represent the Plymouth River Neighborhood Association, which is comprised of various property owners in Autumn Circle and in the general vicinity of the project. property owners in Autumn Circle and in the general vicinity of the project. A couple of comments. First, we're continuing our review. We've hired CHA Companies, Gabe Crocker and Kelly Colleen, and I'm going to ask them to provide the board with very brief overall comments on their initial observations of the revised plan set that was just filed. But before I do, I just wanted to talk about Autumn Circle and in particular, what I call the control of the site. I understand I did provide a letter today and, and the applicant hasn't had an opportunity to sufficiently review it. I'm sure they will and provide a response to the board, but I thought for purposes of the public process and, and since we're all here today, I would kind of review that for the board. Control of the site, it's something that is set forth in the, in the regulations for 40B. In particular, it's found in the, the site eligibility provisions. Basically, what it says is that one of the minimum requirements of site eligibility is that the applicant controls the site. So this application was, well, not application, but this process was begun, I'm sure the board's aware of the procedures, but the process was begun with a, a application to the Board of Selectmen for site approval. That happens over a year ago, or almost two years ago, actually. And essentially, that application went in and it did not show a cut-through to Autumn Circle. So the Board of Selectmen have a very short timeframe to elicit the review of the other boards and departments and to provide their comments to the subsidizing agency, which is Mass Housing. It did that without the benefit of knowing that there was a cut-through that was being proposed or would be proposed through the project over two private properties on the cul-de-sac of Autumn Circle. So here we have an issue of what is the minimum requirement that a site could, is required to have in order to even qualify for a 40B? And that is control of the site. So the town, the community who gave the Board of Selectmen input at the time, Mass Housing, nobody had the benefit of the knowledge that there was going to be a cut-through over this private property for this pivotal, very substantial 40-foot wide road in between two properties spilling into a cul-de-sac. So now, now we know better. Just recently, within the last month, a revised plan set shows this particular cut-through after the project has received its project site eligibility certificate from the Mass Housing. So there is a provision in the regulations, 760 CMR 56.04, which deals with what happens when there's a substantial change to the project after site eligibility. What occurs then? And what the regulation says is that if there's a substantial change that affects the specific criteria of project site eligibility, AKA control of the site, that Mass Housing has to be notified, Board of Selectmen, town have to be notified, you have to be notified. And there has to be an opportunity for Mass Housing to comment on that and to determine whether or not it's, it's a substantial change. And if it's a substantial change, the, the Mass Housing has the, ordinarily, it would defer its determination of that until after the, the permit, if it's been approved, has been approved. But it does have the jurisdiction and the ability and the authority to comment on it prior to the conclusion of this public hearing. And so I think that this issue of control is really important because we now know that there was no taking out there. So what we're relying upon is apparently an easement, AKA a right-of-way shown on a plan. I have reviewed the titles to these properties and I haven't seen a single grant of an easement or reservation of an easement that Viking Properties took or reserved to itself when it sold the land that ultimately became Autumn Circle. I think that it's not my responsibility to prove that the absence of a grant of a right-of-way. I think that it's the applicant's responsibility to prove that they actually have a right-of-way. And all they're saying is, is we have some deeds that reference that it exists on a plan, and we have a plan that references that it exists, and we have a taking that references the plan, and therefore, we probably have a right-of-way. I, I think that that is insufficient, and it would be real travesty if the applicant weren't required to provide that information. Additionally, site control has to also do with, with, with site distances. And what I mean by that is a safety issue. What I mean by that is Emily read into the record that this board received various letters from abutters prior to tonight's hearing. My review of those letters indicate that the abutters along Ward Street at the intersection of Viking Lane on both sides, where really the width or the frontage of the property is basically the width of Viking Lane itself, have indicated that they're going to be planting vegetative buffers, high vegetative buffers along, right along the property line, right along the border. Well, that's a safety issue. It's a safety issue because the applicant does not control the site distances. These people legitimately want to shield their properties from this massive project and the lights and the noise and everything else that's occurring. And, and without an actual grant of an easement by these neighbors to the applicant so that the applicant control, can control these site distances, I think that that is an absolute safety issue and in and of itself is not consistent with local needs and is the proper basis to deny an application like this. Additionally, I can represent that the two property owners at the end of the cul-de-sac over there, where the right-of-way goes over their properties, 20% on one side and 20% of, 20 feet in width on one side and 20 feet in width on the other, assuming there is a right-of-way, that where, where that right-of-way would spill into Autumn Circle, they've indicated to me that they're going to be providing the board addition with letters as well, which indicate that they're going to be shielding their properties right up to the edge of that road. And so I think you have a site distance issue, and it comes down to control, control. What can the applicant control? What could this board condition in order to make this project safe so that it can get its affordable housing, which is the presumption that the state has here? And this board cannot control, cannot condition the private property of other individuals so that they make this a safe, accessible project for the community and the people that live there. So that's what I have to say about that. I think that this board should ask Van Ass Associates, Jeffrey Dirk, to assume, when he's, when he's doing his traffic analysis here, his peer review, to assume that there will be vegetation right up to the edge of the property there. That's something that I think is, is necessary. Additionally, this issue of Aquarian, my question is, does, does this, has anybody done a study of whether the infrastructure which provide water to this property could actually support the increased demand? I understand that, you know, we're looking for a letter from Aquarian, but really, this is a question of what are the conditions of the pipes? What are the additional, what's the additional flow that's going to be through those pipes? What are the sizes of the pipes and so forth? And the question also would be, is would this additional flow actually somehow lessen the water pressure of the, of the neighbors in the vicinity? Again, another issue, not our issue to demonstrate, their issue to demonstrate. That's why these peer reviews are very important, and if this board doesn't have enough information to make a determination here, it ought to deny the project. I wanted to just kind of remind the board that there is this, you know, I know the board's aware, its own regulations incorporate by reference the CMRs, and they also, in addition to that, have their own requirements about the site, about health and safety issues, which include sewage, drainage and traffic, open space. I don't see much in the way of open space here. So these are issues I think that the board, I encourage the board to stay close to its, its requirements. I know the board will. On the issue of the wetland line, because we just talked about it briefly, so the app, the, the folks that live in Autumn Circle, I don't believe have the ability to enter the private land of the, you know, the applicant's land over there in order to do their own Anrad. If they had that ability, they would, in order to determine whether or not any portion of the so-called right-of-way is jurisdictional. Because as I said at the last meeting, the threshold issue there is that these, these private individuals will not be signing a notice of intent application to allow any work to be done out there if it is jurisdictional. So this issue of the Anrad line, very, very important. So those are my initial comments. Is in the future, at some next hearings, I'm sure I'll be bringing in some additional information concerning the right-of-way. My initial analysis is that there is no right-of-way, no actual grant, which is why you don't see one. And as I indicated at my last, at the last meeting, in all likelihood, we'll be filing an action about that as well, probably prior to the close of the public hearing process. So just wanted the board to be aware of that. And with that, I'll just ask Gabe or Kelly to briefly inform the board as to what their kind of major issues that they see before they get into the nitty-gritty, since they haven't had the time to do that.
Before you, before you sit down, just in your next submission to us, it'd be helpful if you distinguished between site control and site access. The, the state regs and the, and the way they've been interpreted, have a distinction between access to the site and control of the site, and those two are not the same.
Great. I'll take a look at that.
Thanks.
Yep.
Good evening. Kelly Colleen from CHA Consulting here this evening with Mr. Crocker, my colleague. We had a few items. We were tasked with going through the application itself. The plans are offering a, a peer review for the Plymouth River Neighborhood Association. And in that review, without getting into all the details and the minutia that's probably been mentioned in previous hearings, there are a few that really stand out to us, and I think they're in lines with the requirements for your submittals under your application for 40B. Specifically, the top item is, as we see it, the septic, the septic, excuse me, we do see that as being a big issue. The information that was provided and the preliminary sizing that was provided, I don't think it, it, in our opinion, satisfies the goal of item 2A adequacy of sewage disposal arrangements and the suitability of local soils for disposal. The applicant has provided information on the original six lots that were created there. That testing was done back in 2003, 2004. Some other testing, as Mr. Brennan had mentioned, there are variable depths to groundwater there. It's fluctuating throughout the site. We think that additional information, current information should be provided for the, to the board and the peer consultants and neighbors for their review. The, the varying groundwater, there actually has, there's some ledge in some places, some refusal. It seems as though they may be ignoring the most restrictive layer, although it's, it is very deep. They may not be addressing that, that it should be addressed in future submittals. The project as, as it was previously approved back in the subdivision, at that time, under the border health regulations, the maximum amount of bedrooms that you could have is about 23. We're now looking at a project that's proposing 90 bedrooms. So we're going from about 2,500 gallons per day up to 9,900. That's a lot of flow that's concentrated in a specific area, unlike the subdivision, the 2,500 that was scattered over the six acres. Title V requires that a mounting analysis be conducted for flows over a certain extent. It certainly falls within that same requirement. I would hope to see or like to see the board require that this information be provided because it could severely impact the abutters, particularly the downstream abutters with systems, basements, and the direct abutters with their future performance of their systems. The drainage, another item which falls under your site design criteria, relying on rapid infiltration rates, that should be verified. The test pits, as Mr. Brennan indicated, are not all underneath the, the basins themselves or the infiltration systems. The access to the basins themselves is very limited. I really didn't see any on there. Should be provided for maintenance. I didn't see any indications of guardrails or anything or fencing to keep kids out. This is a family project. Emergency overflows, currently going to overflow, it appears to overflow to Ward Street and potentially some abutters. And then lastly, the open space. It's a family project. They're crediting themselves with 3.6 acres of open space. That's everything that you see there that's not paved sidewalk or roadway or building. So open space in this application would be between the buildings, between the decks. That's not adequate open space in my read of your requirements for adequacy of open space, including outdoor recreational areas. Again, it's a family project. The large area that they do provide for recreation over the septic system, it's about 16,000 square feet. So just per unit, we're talking about 500 square feet per unit for open space recreation, which is about three parking spaces. It seems as though that it may be lacking in that situation. So, thank you.
Do you have anything that you want to submit to the board?
Not at this point. We will submit a later, a letter later.
Later. We are looking forward to what you'll submit. Great. Someone else? Did you have another consultant you wanted to?
No, I didn't. Not, not tonight.
Okay.
Couple of just quick additional points.
You have to use the microphone.
Sorry.
Can't stop myself from talking. Couple of quick additional points is first, I don't see much in the way of any elevations. I still don't. And so I, I just asking the board because we'd like to see how this project fits in with the community. But in addition to that, I know that Susan had a point of clarification. I just wanted to make sure whatever it is, it's not missed on the board. So, thank you.
Got it. Thanks.
He's looking out for me.
Okay. Well, with that introduction, Susan Murphy.
I just want, I just want to speak to the Autumn Circle question because as, Mr. DeLeese had also submitted the case law, which you had asked me to look at.
Yes.
I, I did look at the case. That's the Williams, the unpublished appeals court case, Williams versus Board of Appeals of Norwell. It, it has a sentence that says, "When an ownership issue adversely and substantially affects the development or use of the proposed project, the review, reviewing board need not ignore that reality." And it refers back to a 2003 appeals court case, Brady versus Gloucester. There, we, not really a lot of other law around this issue. Add to that issue, what, what the court said, and even going back to the, the Brady case, which was very fact-specific, is that the board not ignore it, which is not saying that the board should decide it. And so I think, you know, the board would determine how it would be appropriate to address it if you feel... how it would be appropriate to address it if you feel it should be addressed. But, you know, I will not speak to what private deeds back and forth might say. That's not the role of the board. But, I can speak to a document that was signed by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Hangham, the taking for Autumn Circle. And I do take issue with any inference that there's anything in this taking that the town took a drainage easement, I mean, took a drainage easement over their easement. There is no reference to that 40-foot area being an easement belonging to anyone. And so, there is nothing in this instrument that speaks at all to that way, and whether, it's referencing that it exists on the plan for, so that when you are reviewing the meets and bounds and the locations of the easements, you can identify where they are. But there is absolutely nothing in an instrument signed by the Selectmen of the Town of Hangham that would give an indication of easement. And so, that is my analysis of this Town of Hangham document.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
So, 13 and 14 Autumn Circle, it's on the back. It says "way." And then I see some drainage easements, where it specifically says a 12-foot drainage easement.
Right.
And then, between 14 and 15, there's a drainage easement that looks like it's split between the two properties. So, my question is, is there an easement for that way in each one of those people's deeds, or that's not our business?
I'm going to answer that in two parts. The first thing is, in Massachusetts, even if you drew a plan and recorded it that said easement across it, it's not sufficient to create an easement. In Massachusetts, you actually have to have an instrument reserving or granting an easement to form an easement. So, it doesn't matter what it says on a plan.
Okay.
But, I've been instructed by the board, and it's not been the board's practice, not to review the title to individual property owners.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And as I said last time, it's my inclination that we are not going to be reviewing meets and bounds and acting as an arbiter on something that could ultimately go to land court. That, my inclination, if we were to reach a point that we were issuing conditions, that there would be condition that there be adequate and lawful access to the property, and that any access shown on the plans would in fact be lawful. That's a condition. Is that a condition that you think would be acceptable to the applicant?
The answer is yes. And that's where we were last time. I mean, I have resisted addressing some of these on that very, very basis. We disagree on a number of issues.
We do.
The law that you cite, I disagree vehemently on. The issue with regard to the taking, as a matter of fact, the taking itself does talk about the taking. It said, "The land of property which writes and easements are hereby taken is owned, supposed to be owned by Viking Realty." It is recited in the document itself. You see the plan in the document. The fact that a reference to a plan may create an easement does exist in Massachusetts, but may not be enough without more. There's a lot more here. The deeds of the property, for example, the deed for Lot 14 is subject to a 40-foot right-of-way to Viking Realty. It is stated in their deed. So, there's a number of issues that say, yes, we do have access. By the way, one of the comments that was made, and I've only had a quick read of Counsel's letter, but he says, you know, "What we need to do is, we need to report back to Mass Housing."
To the funding agencies, yeah.
And the issue there is that, yes, but every other change is not normally done that way. As a matter of fact, I've dealt with this issue with Mass Housing on a number of occasions in 40Bs. And their official policy is, "We won't do anything until the end." And they will not respond to that kind of situation. Plus the fact, I don't think it even raises to that point. The materials that we submitted for our eligibility letter have a plan that shows that easement line on the plan. The plan that was submitted to this board shows that easement line on the plan, each and every one of them. Everything before has that easement line on the plan. Our deed and our P&amp;S agreement says, "The benefit of all easements therein." So, I don't think, we did not tell anybody what it is. It was there. They saw it. They saw it. Now, I do agree that we tried not to use that. But in terms of the comments that we received, saying, "We need two means of access," we were saying, "Okay, all right. We will address your concerns and comments, and hence the reason why we address that," and went that particular route. But I do think that the issue of title, from that perspective, should certainly, and if we look at, you talked about Williams, and they do talk about that they should not ignore with regard to the lack of ownership, but only when it's straightforward and clear. And if it's not straightforward and clear, it's properly done outside with regard to whatever suit he thinks he decides to file, and that determination is made. So, a long answer to yes.
Got it.
So, actually, I'm going to reserve the comment right now. I think what I'll do is, I'll write it to the board. Okay? Thanks.
And this will not be the last opportunity for comment as well?
Yeah, that's why.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. But Susan, I'd like you to go a little bit further, not really talking about the Autumn Circle issue, but just in general, what it is that 40B allows this board to be asking of applicants, because we've had some pushback in terms of whether or not something's required under state versus local. It'd be helpful just to share the guidance that you've been giving us, so that we're all on the same page.
My understanding from the hearings we've had and the letters, that-
Second. Can everyone hear Susan?
I guess my microphone's less sensitive.
Okay.
My understanding from testimony to the board at the hearings and in the letters you've received, is an argument that I'm interpreting, but, you know, if I'm wrong, I'm happy to be corrected, that the items listed in 56.05-2, elements of submission, are all that's required. They can't be asked for anything else. They don't have to give you anything else. That's what I believe had been said in writing and at these hearings. But I would like to note that that's not what the regulations say. 56.05, Section 1, local rules, the board may adopt local rules, not inconsistent with 40B and the regulations. Rules adopted by the board are presumed to be consistent with 40Bs to the extent they conform with the regulations. In subsection 2, it says, "The items listed below," normally the items listed below will constitute a complete description, not "the items listed below are all you need to," right? In addition, the next item is, "The board shall not require submissions for a comprehensive permit that exceed those required by the rules and procedures of local boards." Now, the local boards each have their own. For example, there's a site plan submission requirements. There's local Board of Health requirements. There may be other submission requirements from other local boards. That is in excess of what's listed in Section 2 for submission requirements. But there's nothing in the regulations saying you can't go beyond this minimum list, which is really for submitting your application. This is the minimum that you need to provide to file the application. I've begun looking at the comparison of what the local boards are saying are missing, compared to your rules and regulations, and all of those items, which Ms. Worth has continued to ask for, and the peer review consultants have continued to ask for, and I have not yet, but I have finished my review, found any request by the board that exceeds the requirements of the rules and regulations of the local boards. So, so far, you are consistent with these regulations. In addition, it talks about the hearing length. A hearing shall not extend beyond 180 days, presuming the applicant has made timely submissions of materials in response to reasonable requests of the board. So, there are multiple places throughout the regulations in which they talk about additional submission requirements that the board may require, and that the applicant is required to timely submit those in order for the board to be bound by timelines. And so, I just, you know, had asked for the opportunity to counter repeated assertions that minimal, non-detailed information is sufficient. The board's rules and regulations state that, and also 40B states, that the board needs to make determinations with respect to waivers. The waivers on local rules and regulations go to local concerns and local needs, and whether or not those exceed the need for affordable housing. Without the information that the board is requesting, you know, it would be a determination for the board whether you have a sufficient information to grant any waiver that's being requested for you. So, I just wanted to kind of do a little bit of a deep dive on the regulations for all the board members, as the board has never been put in this situation before, of having to understand, you know, whether or not what they're asking for should be delivered or not. So...
Thank you. The caveat that I ask you to make sure we don't, that we follow, that we don't transgress, is that we should not be asking for information that is beyond what would typically be asked by an applicant, whether or not they're a 40B applicant.
Right. Exactly.
But to the extent that we are asking for information that is consistent with the local rules, we intend to continue to do that unless you revise us otherwise.
No. I have found nothing in 40B that would counter this interpretation.
Okay. Thank you. Did you want to say anything now?
Very quickly, and not necessarily to say you've got to answer every issue. And of course, your counsel, I understand her position, and obviously, your deference toward that. The whole purpose of a 40B, in large part, is an economic and efficient process in order to encourage affordable housing. And in that design, if the board can ask for absolutely everything, as you would on a completed site issue, then the cost of getting to either no or even yes makes it prohibitive, and therefore, the 40Bs are chilled. The plans clearly, and everything that's asked for, talk about the submission of preliminary plans. It has a provision that says you may condition it on receiving other permits from other boards and from the state, but you cannot delay or deny it on that particular basis. In trying to get a project at least permitted while those conditions are satisfied, it is a preliminary plan. Now, I don't doubt that you can ask, and you have asked. The then-question becomes is whether we have given enough necessarily to satisfy you. The dynamic is, that if you look at 5605-8, "A hearing is terminated when the public testimony has been received and all information requested by the board that it is entitled to receive." Interesting words, okay? Are you entitled to receive that? Ms. Murphy and I will argue that point, okay? Has been received, has been submitted, all right? The interesting part about it is, is that when we're dealing with these local concerns, I think it's very, very critical to understand that when we're dealing with that, in terms of the information submitted and what you have to do, Section 5605-4, since we're into quoting, 40B talks about, "In the conduct of a hearing, the board should make itself aware the detailed provisions for the burden of proof and the evidence set forth in CMR 5607-2 and 3, and that the committee, HSA, would apply to the appeal of the board's decision." That standard, if you go back and look at it, is not the fact that there is a local regulation, or local rule, or the aspect of a town official saying, "I think this should be." For instance, the 24-foot right-of-way is a design suggestion. It is not a requirement anywhere, okay? Matter of fact, 40Bs, 20-feet-wide issues are permitted all the time, in every place. But leaving that point, the standard is not that it exists, and not that it's forwarded for the board's consideration. The standard is whether to which the health and safety of the occupants is imperiled, not improved, imperiled, a very difficult standard. The degree to which the natural environment is endangered, okay? And it goes on in terms of the design of the site is seriously deficient. And it goes on, that's the standard for which we're looking at. So, if you look at these things, we're not trying to be obstructionist, but we're trying within the bounds of extraordinary cost and extraordinary delay to try to get all the information that we're able to give to you, consistent with what 40Bs are all about, and consistent with the issue of preliminary plans. You know, for instance, the recite, each one of these things that we're trying to do, we believe that we're meeting that burden and trying to address each one of those concerns.
You keep bringing up this, a long delay, a long delay. Were you talking about the court proceedings?
No. I was talking about, for example, in this project itself, all right, we started this, well, almost two years ago. So, that is a long delay for which we had to do, fight. We had to do the appeal issues. We had to go back through to get back to where we are. We went ahead and said, in response to it, "We're going to redesign it, see if we can address some of these concerns." That is more issues, and more engineering from that perspective. If we had to fully do all the engineering to the detail that boards do that, you could not afford even to do the project. I think I mentioned earlier, I don't know if I did or not, I had one project where it took seven years to get a thing in the ground, because the board would appeal every issue at every point. We were successful, but that is a burden, and that's exactly what 40B is not designed to do. Matter of fact, there was a recent case in which a zoning board of appeals and a 40B were tagged with attorney's fees, because their claims were frivolous along the way. So, it is this balance. I understand that. We're trying to meet that. But I did need, I think, to make that comment, that that's the standard in which I think is appropriate, and the standard which the courts will apply.
But there's also a standard that if you are looking for a waiver of a local regulation, you will have to demonstrate that if we impose that regulation, it would cause the project to be uneconomic. And unless we have the data that supports that finding, we will not be in a position to consider the waiver. So, we need to make sure that we've got that information in place.
And I appreciate that. I understand that. I know, in terms of the process you're dealing with, if you're suggesting certain conditions, then we are responding with the uneconomic. Then we're dealing with the numbers, and we're dealing with the performance. I understand all that.
But I'm not talking about-
But I'm talking about even, from the waiver point of view, I understand board's reticence to have a blanket waiver. I understand that. However, I think that in the application, what we tried to do tonight is to understand what you were exactly looking for, so that we can respond. The particularity of it, why we want to do it, we understand what you said.
So, it's not just, just so we're clear, it's not this board's reticence for a blanket waiver. It's DHCD, Mass Housing has official policy, we should not be granting blanket waivers.
I understand.
And it's not our intention to do that.
And nor have we asked for it.
I understand, except, obviously, the document that we received from you asked for a blanket waiver.
In fact, it asked for five blanket waivers. This document contains five blanket waivers.
Yeah.
Right. You've now modified it.
And I think, I think we modified it to make sure we understand that the waivers we want are as the permits come out, which may impose conditions of which we did not propose. So, it has to have some flexibility on that one, but I do understand the specificity you're asking for.
When do you think we would be able to get that revised document that actually gets rid of the blanket waiver language, and that includes the justification for each of the waivers that are being asked? And let me just give you an easy example, which is, if you have- And let me just give you an easy example, which is if you have a unit that requires a five-foot setback, and there's only one unit that requires a five-foot setback, and you've asked for a waiver of the setback requirements, it would just be limited, and our responsibility would be to limit it to just that one unit. So, unless we have that level of specificity, we would not be in a position to appropriately consider the waivers.
We hear what you're saying.
Okay.
To the, and we can argue whether or not that is according to the law or not. I think the one thing, however, is that when those waivers will be submitted, I will put in a savings clause.
To the extent that there are changes from the application from where it is when you submit the waiver request, we can understand. But if you're looking for a savings clause for other waivers that might be required, assuming no changes, that is in fact a blanket waiver.
And Mr. Chairman, I would note that a change like that is required to go through the project change process in which they submit it to the board and the board makes a determination if it's substantial or not. So, what they're asking for, I mean, you were looking to the Chapter 40B handbook for zoning boards of appeal. It's very specific what the guidance being given from all of the subsidizing agencies is to this board. And it states, "As a rule, the ZBA should not grant what is commonly known as a plan waiver or a blanket waiver to accommodate conditions that may be apparent on the developer's plan but not specifically identified in a list of waivers requested by the developer. As efficient as a general plan waiver may sound, unless the application identifies the specific waivers needed, it can be very difficult for the building official to apply and interpret later when the developer submits final plans in anticipation of filing a building permit application." So, the agencies, the subsidizing agencies that grant site eligibility and seek to not take up challenges or every little change are saying it has to be specific and boards should not ever grant any sort of blanket or open-ended waiver.
Yep. At this point, I'm going to ask my fellow board members if they've got questions, and then I want to turn it over to members of the public if they have comments or questions.
I don't have any more questions this evening. We've got a lot of new information that we have to go over and anticipate I'll have a couple at the next turn.
Get the chief out there.
Yeah, we see the fire chief.
So, are there any, are there any town officials who have comments or questions that'd like to present at this point?
I guess that would be you.
That would be you, come on up.
On up, chief.
I think you're the only one here with a sidearm, so we're going to give you a lot of...
I should have gone first. We're going to give you a lot of justice.
Hi, Glenn Olson, police chief. I originally submitted a letter earlier in April 14th regarding this, and there's been some changing of plans as we've gone along here. I've consistently sort of asked for more detailed plans, including bedroom counts, which I think just came in today or recently, I haven't seen those, but I believe it's in the 90-bedroom. So, there may be additional issues as we go along through this that I'm going to have to make additional comments on as stuff comes in. I've asked for new traffic studies to include the Autumn Circle neighborhood. I sort of have a regular letter, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the traffic studies that are out there need to be reviewed. We need to include the travel route through Autumn Circle and its intersections with High Street. I believe there's some issues there that aren't the best, and obviously I have a great deal of concerns when you're putting in, you know, what's soon going to be, in my opinion, people are going to find it as a cutthroat area because they're avoiding the bad intersection that raises an F at High and French. I've asked for the road to be 24 feet wide to provide enough safety issues and areas for pedestrian safety and vehicles. School bus movement might end up in through there. I did, I know some of the sidewalks got reviewed, but I believe they're still using, they're still using a Cape Cod berm instead of a, instead of curbing which prevent a vehicle from driving, a curbing which prevent vehicles from driving up onto the sidewalk. They've added and changed around some visitors' parking, which is good, they've increased it a little bit, but I'm still not really sure that people are going to be using the visitors' parking because people don't like to park too far away. I heard tonight that they changed the length of the driveways. That's always one of my concerns, the driveways I think are under length and would have vehicles sticking out. I think the density of the housing units still are going to lead to a higher call for service for the police department. Lack of setbacks will generate additional cars due to neighborhood issues, light spillage, noise spillage. I didn't see any planning for where they're going to be stacking snow during the winter months because winter causes runoff that could run into the roads and also cause more problems at the intersection. And I don't know if you've done anything with the school department as far as looking at where you're going to be locating school bus stops. So, the letter has been submitted, I did make some revisions to it this morning to add in some of the new stuff that I had realized, so you should have had a clap, yeah, but I think I sent it over on email. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other town officials with comments or questions at this point? And now, I'll turn it over to members of the public, and I think you can just, please state your name and...
Regina Casey, 17 Autumn Circle. And I don't understand a lot of what's been talked about here, to be honest with you. Retired social worker, I work with homeless people, I am in full support of any 40B housing that the state has to offer. I worked with people that were in motels, which cost the state an enormous amount of money and put incredible strains on families. So, I support any help that families who are in need can get. I don't understand, number one, how much money a 40B unit would cost people, and I don't understand why, and by the way, the whole thing about affluence, it puts me in peril because I am a city girl and I don't even want to think about what's going to roll down the hill to my yard. I have a nice vegetable garden and I like to eat the food that comes out of there. So, that being said, why so many units? Why can't you, someone just put four or five units in there, put enough space around them, and not be asking for waivers and wasting everyone's time? And I don't know who you are, sir, I respectfully, I'm thinking you might be an attorney. I have this feeling you're on someone's payroll when you come here. I'm not on anyone's payroll, okay? I am a sick person, I have pneumonia right now, I shouldn't even be here, but I have to come here to listen to all this because I want to protect my neighborhood that has no sidewalks. And one of the beauties of my neighborhood, and someone else alluded to this, are all the children. Those kids were out there wearing their bikes today, we have no sidewalks, they were rolling around, you know, we as older people, I'm almost 70, you know, I get nervous backing out of my driveway because those kids are playing. And I don't want to see that neighborhood destroyed. I also don't want the affluence rolling down the hill, and I don't know why you can't just put four or five units in there and call it a day. And then you don't have to waste everyone's time in here and ask for waivers so that you can have space around for the public safety, for the fire and the police. You are wasting all the taxpayers' money. And I don't even know how much these units are going to cost and who will benefit by them because I, as a taxpayer, would like to know, are these units going for $40,000 a unit so that people can afford to live there? Are you going to be selling them like they did up at Ridgeway Crossings to people who have more money than I to get the 40B? Because that has gone on in the town. And please, I'm sorry you have to come here to work tonight, but I'm sure you're getting hefty pay, and I'm not getting anything. And I would not like very much not to have to pay these guys any more money. I want a fixed income, let's face it. You know, as much as I like to keep fighting you guys or keep coming to these meetings, resolve something. And by the way, could you please turn your stuff in on time? Otherwise, you get marked absent and you get an F on the paper, okay? Because that's where I'm at with this.
Thank you. Okay. If it makes you feel any better, we're not getting paid either.
I know, yeah. I'm going to write you that letter and say...
We used to get three bucks a hearing, but that was years ago.
We get three waters and... Yeah. Farouk Youssef, 48 Ward Street.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Farouk Youssef, 48 Ward Street. I heard the presentation, they mentioned that the septic system going to be 90,000 gallons. I have here, which the public record again, what's done in 2002, the revised drainage analysis, it's about 35 pages, talk about all kind of, I mean, what do you call it? Hole that they did in the ground, and about 30 or about 20-something of them here. Anyway, the drainage system for that previous development was for six lots, for say 18, 20 houses and 99, 9900 gallons. Now, with the newer one here, you have assuming 90 bedrooms for the same amount of septic system. What kind of logic is that? I mean, when you think about it, how could you have something for 20 bedrooms, the same for 90 bedrooms? I think we are a lot of engineers here and common sense make, has to come to a point here. The other thing I hear argument about, "We don't want to spend money now, approve me first, and then I'll show you what you're going to get." What country are we living in here? We live in the United States of America where we care about the life and safety of every person, every animal, every plant, not to approve me first and then I give you... And here is the regulation again, which I mentioned two years ago, and when you look at 56.05, local hearings, and goes on here and say, "Below are examples of factual areas of local concern in which evidence may be heard if it is relevant to the issue in dispute." And lists too many. First one, health, safety and welfare of the public. And then the structural soundness, I'm not going to read the whole thing, adequacy of sewer system, adequacy of water drainage, adequacy of fire protection, adequacy of applicants' proposed arrangement for dealing with traffic, circulation within and feasibility and so on. All of these are required in 56 for you, the board, to make an intelligent decision to approve it, not approve me first and then I'll show you what you're going to get. I think we are here again, I'm saying, in Hingham, Massachusetts of the United States of America, not Hingham in Bel Air Republic somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Joyce Bethany, I live at 23 Autumn Circle. I have a question about what Attorney Warren read in regards to 13 and 14 Autumn Circle? Was that, am I right?
Lots 13 and 14, Mr. Dittman.
Oh, lots 13 and 14, okay, gotcha. My question is, what was it that he read? What...
What were you reading from? Do you know what...
My notes.
No, you read something that was supposedly...
Right, presumably those are his notes based upon the studies that he's done on the land.
I thought, I thought he might have quoted a case.
Yeah, did you say you were looking at someone's deed, those lots 14 and 13?
Yeah, so my notes indicate that the deed for Lot 14, which I think was 18 Autumn Circle, in 1961, the property was subject to a 40-foot right-of-way to Viking Realty Company, Inc., 20 feet on Lot 14 and 20 feet on Lot 13.
Okay, my question is, where did you read that from? Where did you...
From the deed.
From whose deed?
The deed that went into Mullins.
Mullins?
Which is probably a predecessor entitle, if you're the owner.
No, no, Mullins is my next-door neighbor. We are on either side of the 40-foot easement. And my deed does not say anything to that effect. And if I, you would like me to submit the deed, I don't have it with me, but it has, does not say anything like that. And I don't think, as a matter of fact, I don't believe the Mullins do because I have a copy of the deed also. I don't believe it has that language.
Okay, well, we'll...
It's in the land record so we can...
Pardon?
It's in the land record so someone can find it, it's there.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Graham Addison, 12 Autumn Circle, just a few questions regarding the traffic study that was submitted tonight. When was that dated and when will that be available to the public?
When is it dated? I don't, it didn't receive that it's...
Because last time we said it, you just received and there was a two-week gap, so I'm just trying to square this.
I believe it's dated today. I'm, it's dated January 25th.
It's dated, today's date, and when will it be up on the town's website?
Can be tonight.
So, by tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you. And then, when you were saying next Friday or some of the other documentation, when will that be made available to the public? Will that be the following Monday?
Be the following.
It will be, I mean, typically if it's received in electronic format, it's clearly a lot easier and quicker to get it up.
Get it up, perfect. And then the last question regarding the wetland, and I live in the neighborhood, it is very wet down there. The attorney mentioned, or the engineer, one of those guys, mentioned their expert is very confident about the lines. Is there a report that's been submitted that we know of or whose authority that are we, this...
So, they have shown the line on their plans, but I don't believe that we've seen a report from a wetland specialist. Is there something in the record that we, that's been submitted yet?
It's just best.
Right, so, and we've noted that, in fact, there is no such report. Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else? In the back? Yep, yes, sir.
Brad Taylor, 16 Autumn Circle.
There are a lot of people who live in Autumn Circle.
On a previous development or attempt to develop this area, it was noted in some documents that the town has on the significant amount of ledge there.
Yes.
Obviously, my concern, living on Autumn Circle, is how are they going to put this many units through ledge? And if there'd be blasting involved? Thank you.
Yep.
If there's blasting involved, it's regulated by the fire department in the state of Massachusetts.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Glenda Garland, 19 Autumn Circle. About the traffic study, the one that's been just submitted, I saw somebody up at the top of the circle counting with a sign outside of his car saying, "Counting traffic", but it only occurred for two days, so I wanted to know whether or not there would be methodology submitted with that study for us to review.
I haven't looked at what's been received, so I don't know if there is a methodology section. I presume there is, and if there isn't, we will make appropriate inquiries.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Brian Marks, 37 Ward Street. My wife and I are relatively new homeowners, our first home that we just bought there a couple of months ago, and we have a, we have a water easement on our property. We're basically, we're almost directly across from where Viking Lane enters Ward Street. And so, we're, I mean, we have a water easement in our back. There's a small amount of water that goes through there into a detention pond. In finding out about this, you know, 30-unit proposed structures, we're pretty worried about the amount of stormwater that could potentially be coming back there, essentially turning our backyard into a lake, causing a bunch of trees to fall down, potentially onto our house. So, we're just very concerned about the project.
Anyone else? Okay, I'd like to talk about schedule. I would like to propose that we meet, what is that one? You know, on... I would like to propose that we meet, what is that one, on February 6th, which is a Tuesday evening, so that we can receive reports and reviews of what has already been submitted, and then by the end of next Friday, which is February 2nd, the material is submitted, then we will at least have a chance to see that information as well. So are both of you available on the 6th of February at 7:00? And then to do a follow-up meeting on February 13th, because I don't know to what extent we'll have sufficient time to review the information that is going to be received on February 2nd, and so we can get those, get those materials looked at and just continue on. Are you available the 13th? Okay.
I am as well, yes.
Okay. Susan, are you...
Yeah.
Okay, the 6th and the 13th?
Just the one note on that is that we probably want to start a little bit earlier because we already have a hearing scheduled on 6/30.
Did you, are both of you available 6:30 on the 13th?
Yeah.
Okay. So what we're talking about is continuing this to February 6th at 7:00 PM, and then following that, continuing to February 13th at 6:30 PM. And hopefully we'll have on the 6th the opportunity to have Jeff Durk review...
We will not, he's not available on the 6th.
No, no, but he...
It's on the 13th.
Okay, so we'll have the traffic review by then, okay.
In terms of responding, I understand, we would, we have promised to submit information by that Friday.
That's the 2nd, yes.
Which would be the 2nd. The 6th is, are you anticipating that on the 6th, there would be discussion about what we submitted on the 2nd?
Most likely not, it would be to review what you submitted this evening, as well as some of the more recent material.
Okay, so just the material, okay, because that would be too short of time under our circumstances.
Right, but I mean, we may have some preliminary questions on what's received on the 2nd, saying, hey, what about this portion?
The 13th would be what's submitted on Friday, would be, that would have enough time for everyone to be able to have a discussion about that material.
Yeah, but I, my goal would be to take advantage of the 6th as much as we can, and if it turns out that you've got an expert who's not available, then at least they'll know what questions we have and they'll be able to respond, but we can move this along.
Other issues, are there any conflicts?
I can't be here on the 6th.
You can't be here on the 6th.
Could your colleague Susan...
He's an important player.
I know that my traffic engineer can be here on the 6th.
Our traffic engineer cannot.
I'd really like Brad to be here to discuss engineering issues.
Yeah. We, there was another person from Mackenzie, we received some materials from, but I don't know, she could step in.
Well, what we submitted tonight was, I just reviewed, I'm not sure...
We just got it yesterday.
You know, there were no changes to the plans, other than what I just described.
Right, but we're talking about the plan that was submitted two days ago, on the 23rd, and so we're going to have...
Yesterday at 4:30 is when it came in.
Oh, I thought it was two days ago, right, so, I mean, that's all, I appreciate the comments that you've, that you've given, but we have not had a chance to look at it. And so we're going to be prepared on the 6th to review that, and then to follow up as needed on the 13th. Okay? And again, if it turns out that someone's not available, you'll, you'll at least be able to convey to them the issues and concerns that we're raising. Emily, you need anything else for...
I need every week.
Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion to continue this to February 6th at 7:00 PM, and then have a following hearing on February 13th at 6:30 PM. So moved.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are continued on this hearing. Anything else, Emily, for this evening?
No.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.